All right, let's go ahead and call this special meeting of the Iscany City Council of the Order. If we can all rise for the pledge of allegiance. Doing a roll call, all council members are present. Steve will be joining us shortly, it sounds like. Do we have any public comment? Hearing done, I'll move or ask for a motion to adopt the agenda.
Motion to adopt the agenda.
I have a motion from Councilman Merrill and a second from Councilman Collison. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. Moving on to discussion items, F1, the 2024 preliminary budget and levy adoption. So, Mike, I don't know if you want to give us a little backstory at all, or you want me to take it over from here, or what do you want to do? Okay. So, I mean, at our last council meeting, we had had a discussion, we ended up with a two-two tie on scenario one and scenario two. Luke was absent at that meeting. And since that meeting, we've actually, we've actually gotten information on what our health insurance increase is going to be, which is huge to have that back. We had budgeted for a 25% increase in both of these scenarios. And Mike, if you want to maybe kind of touch on that, and it sounded like it was only 5%, which, how much did that end up saving us then?
Yeah, it's...
I mean, or ballpark, I guess, I should say.
Yeah, and maybe Josie can remind me. It's either 4.3 or 4.7. 4.3. Sorry, today has been one of those days. So, I really haven't had any chance to look at this except to very quickly try to plug in some numbers. Rough benefit, the general fund is going to be somewhere around 70 grand. The caveat to that, I'd say, is is don't forget that staff employees can change their elections. So, might have somebody moving off of coverage or onto coverage, or family to single, single to family, whatever. And that will change that number, but just as it sits now, that's where that is.
That's that's huge. I know that was one of the things that had been a concern for everybody up here. And I wasn't real concerned about it, but I know that some of the other one, other folks up here were. So, that's another 70,000 that we've got in cushion heading into this. So, I think that's huge to have gotten that number back early like that is is a really substantial amount of money that we know now that we'll have that additional cushion if if for some reason we would need it. You know, I know you, the work comp, it sounds like you've got 10% increase kind of budgeted in in both of these scenarios. So, we've got that cushion there that, you know, typically, I mean, I guess, I'm guessing that you base that off of historical averages or maybe even above historical averages?
Well, it's, it's always a bit of a guess because I'm not necessarily privy to every detail of every worker's comp claim. But, yeah, when I'm setting that, it is not just based on historical stuff, but also what I understand to be the history, right? So, workers' comp claims look back in time, right, and an understanding of how they're going to set rates in the future. So, I think, I think 10 is safe.
Okay.
But...
So, I mean, I think there we've, you know, and we can always adjust. I mean, all we're doing is saying this is the maximum amount that the levy will be. We can always adjust and make different changes in this scenario, but and there's no, any other unknowns that would be substantial. I mean, with that, that basically covers it, right, was the the health insurance, which we now know, and then work comp. And is there really any other big, big ticket items that we don't know what the answer to that is? Or at least, you know, have a very, very good educated guess on? Dental, I know we had talked about before, but it's not substantial in one way or another, and...
Yeah, if I had been less busy the last, today and this week, I would have given this question a little more thought. But off the top of my head, I think anything else that would have changed, that would be like a material change, would actually end up being a washout. I think most of this stuff would be probably related to our, the building official position and how that might pan out and whether we swap software or some, you know, things like that. But on that, I think we're in the way, and for what I figure right now for permit revenue, it is pretty close to a wash between whether you have it in-house or not, and the same would be with software. If we end up having to switch software to accommodate a contracted service, then I think that would be roughly a wash. I mean, not an amount that I'd be worried about.
Okay.
We do have, you know, last meeting, we have the academy and what is the two police programs? I cannot recall the name, but we were figuring on adding...
Explorers and the Citizens Academy, which was a little over 10 grand.
Yeah, we're 10, 4, 10, 7, something. So, that would have to get added in at some point. You know, things to think about on that.
And then, we had talked, and Luke, I don't know how much of this you caught or if you watched. I know you said you watched the meeting, but so the grader, we moved back in to scenario one. So, we'll still get the grader from Forest Lake next year. And the salt shed, we actually moved forward in scenario one from 2025 to 2024. So, that I think is is something there. And then, Mike and I, I had talked with him, and it sounds like we probably could move the plow truck back in, which I know is a huge thing for Public Works, would be to get that plow truck moved back in without changing this levy amount, correct?
Correct.
So, I mean, I think that that was one of the things that I know Dan and Steve were very concerned about was the plow truck. So, I mean, I think, to me, scenario one just makes a lot of sense that, hey, we're committing that you will not pay more as long as you've got the same house as you did last year, even though the county says that you went up 8.8% in average value. Because of the way that we're structuring this levy, we're going to guarantee that you will not pay more than you did this year. And we can always work it down from there, or we can maybe put things back in that we decide are more of a priority. You know, seasonal employees potentially could be something that we say, well, maybe we decide whether we do need them or not need them. But we can still adjust for that as we go down the road here.
I just want to say one thing, it's not necessarily guaranteed that your taxes won't go up, but on an average, as an aggregate.
Right, I mean, as long, yeah, I mean, not every prop, not all properties are equal, but the best, the best numbers that we can use to make decisions off of are average numbers. So, if your property is the same as it was last year and it went up the same amount of value as the average value is at 8.8%, which is what the county says your property went up to, no matter if you made changes, no changes at all. I mean, your your property is worth more than it did, and we're guaranteeing by making that scenario one decision that you will not pay anything more than than what you did this year, if that's the case.
For the city portion, yep.
For the city portion, right. And we can always, like I said, we can always come down from there, or we could always, you know, move things around, you know, with that 70,000 cushion that we have there now. I mean, that's, right now, I would assume that you'd see that go to fund balance. And then, we could say, okay, well, do we want to put that much in fund balance, which would be 190 in fund balance? It's our rainy day fund. I mean, that's, that's huge to be able to do that kind of stuff. And, I mean, to me, it makes a lot of sense to go scenario one. You know, adding the plow truck back in takes care of of a lot that I know Dan was concerned about. And any other questions, comments, concerns, otherwise?
So, Mike, I have a question for you. You added the plow truck back in, how did you structure that to be able to not increase the levy and still cover that?
Basically, when we, when we move things around, as the mayor had asked for before, there was really two choices with the levy. Either you drop the levy entirely for the year, but then you have a baked-in increase, which we talked about. So, you could go down 13%, for example, but you're pretty much guaranteed to have an 11% increase. And, you know, my advice on that is always, nobody cares what you did last year, they want to know, what did you do for me lately? So, that's maybe not the best plan. So, then what we did was simply reorganized all of the future levies, right? So, it had been set at 390, move it down to 360, and then base all future levies off of that 360 amount. Well, once we had all that laid out and all the requests were made and everything had been satisfied, if you look at the ending cash balance at the end of 2024, it was sufficient to cover the plow truck. And so, as long as the plow truck was still to the left, imagine our our capital schedule, so long as the plow truck was still to the left of the next inflection point, moving in between those areas doesn't change anything. That inflection point, that low point in cash on the future schedule is still the same low point in cash on the future schedule. So, it just, it just works out. And, yeah, there's not, not too much effort on that one.
What do you think the price difference is on the public works facility 10 years from now versus 20 years from now?
So, we originally planned...
Three and a half mil?
Oh, I would say, yeah, we were basically, it's like when we originally inspected in 2019, or it must have been 2019, we were at about 2 to 2.125, something for just that, the building, not the salt shed. And, yeah, now we're going to be in more than that three and a half range.
But you got to remember, that's in 20, what it would be, you know, 20, 20-year dollars down the road. I mean, it's not in today's dollars either, so everything is relative.
Yeah, and remember, on the, on the capital plan, I assume that revenues are going to increase at the same rate as expenses, that any inflationary cost is an offset, that it affects both sides of that equation equally. So, there is an impotence on any future councils that if inflation is particularly high, you would need to understand that as expenses go up, say, 8 or 10% across the board in one year, revenues for that fund would need to go up 8 or 10% per year. But the idea is, is that those two wash out, that the inflation is felt equally on each side of that equation.
Right. Yeah, and as well, we have all that space in in the PD building that, you know, we don't have a ton of new hires coming in that 20 years where it's going to be completely filled up with with PD equipment and that kind of thing. So, I just think we've got the, we've got the space, we might as well make good use of it, so.
Witnessed how much Public Works Department can grow over a 20-year period, so firsthand.
All right. Well, I'd look for a motion, I mean, I'd like to see a motion for scenario one, if anybody wants to make it, I'd...
I'd like to wait for the other council member, that's the whole purpose of having this...
I have another question for you, Mike, if that's okay. So, you know, I've been thinking, we only have, other than Friday and Saturday evenings, we only have one police cruiser running. So, and we have, what is it, nine vehicles right now? And I know I don't mean to kind of bang on the PD, but why do you need to have a new vehicle every year when you only have one cruiser on at all times? I don't, I don't understand why we would need to have the greatest and best. If you only need one good, one good vehicle, you're pretty much guaranteed five years out of a cruiser. Why do we have to replace one every single year?
I'll let John speak to the, like, the fleet management and that part of it. But from a, from a finance perspective and the planning purchases, capital purchases and replacement for PD, my guiding principle on that is that there are certain capital items for the PD that simply have to work every single time. Tasers, handguns, rifles, and a squad car, you know, kind of the basics, that all of those things have to work every single time. Somebody's life is in jeopardy potentially if it doesn't. And I've been using the five-year rotation on squad cars for a long time, and I've yet to be, I've yet to have to have egg on my face on that one. If council or anybody else wants to say that, no, we can go six or seven or eight, whatever, that, that's fine. It's just not my recommendation.
I guess I just don't understand why we only have one cop on at all times, but we need nine vehicles that have to be tip-top shape. I mean, I get that it's important, obviously, for at least one or two to be great, but if we're replacing one every single year, I mean, next year, we're scheduled for two, I don't see how that makes sense. Why would we need new, two new cruisers when you only have one on at all times? I don't get why we have to have the, and then they're going to sit there and not get used. And, I mean, I get that the police need to have the best stuff for the first responders, but what about the investigators and stuff like that? Do they really need to have anything that's, you know, top of the line? I mean, a lot of households don't work that way, so why should the city?
Real tag on to that is, we do, in the plan, we do differentiate between patrol vehicles and investigator lieutenant, the non-p patrol vehicles. Non-p patrol vehicles are 10-year rotation. Patrol vehicles are five-year rotation, because those would be the vehicles where you'd expect to leave for a scene first.
Okay, so how many patrol vehicles do we have right now on the, on our books?
Primary patrol vehicles, we have four.
Okay. So, why do we have four? For the max, we have on, for officers, only two at a time, and that's only Friday and Saturday evenings?
That's not correct, Mr. Merrill. We have two officers on every single day.
Every evening, right?
Every evening.
Yeah, and one in the daytime.
I thought it was, okay.
And we have one in the daytime, but there's also myself, the chief, or the investigator, somebody if need be, we're that second car. We currently have two cars that are supposed to be replaced next year. One's, we're waiting on an entire motor for, and we can't get. And the other one, we just took up there today, and that one, by the sounds of it, is going to need another engine, too. So, I would even shy away from the five-year plan because we're learning that's, that's getting pushed out because when some of these go down, we run those other cars 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So, we can't guarantee when parts are going to come, so I would even think less would be better.
Okay, I thought for some reason we had it set so there was only two patrol vehicles on a Friday and Saturday night. Was that, or was that when we were shorter staffed?
That's when we were short staffed.
Okay, so now it's back to one during the day and two every evening?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I got a quick question.
Scenario one includes both of those police vehicles.
Yeah, I just think, I mean, if we're, if we're taken so hard from Public Works and we're not even, it doesn't even seem like we're really skimming anything from PD, even though that's the biggest line item, so I don't, I don't, I'm just looking for reasonable ways.
The only thing that we're taking from Public Works is, well, I mean, we're moving the Public Works building back, but we've got space for that that can be shared, but...
And then seasonal workers.
Seasonals, I mean, how much are the seasonals? Because we've got 70,000 there to play with, so if you want to have that discussion now, we certainly can. But seasonals, I mean, in labor cost, and the reason that we, and I still think that we probably can get by without them. But, but Mike, if you want to think about that for a second, but remember, when we made that decision, we said to ourselves, well, boy, they had time to put in 20 water meters a day on a lot of days. I mean, I know not every day worked out like that, but I mean, I think there's, I think they worked their butts off over there at Public Works, and we've got a really, really great team, but I think you, you can prioritize what needs to be done, you know what I mean? There's certain things that are high priority items, and there's things that are less, less of a priority, right? So, you know, I think that, that to me gives you kind of the advantage there. But Mike, what was the dollar amount that we were saving by taking the seasonals out?
It's 35, just in, on pay total. And then, when you have the workers' comp insurance and all that payroll taxes, all that stuff, you end up at right about 40.
Okay, so, I mean, that's what I was saying, is that we've got that savings there of that 70 already, about thereabouts. I mean, I can't, you know, hold Mike to that necessarily, but, so, I mean, if we want to have that discussion down the road, you know, not tonight, we're probably not going to want to make changes to screw that all up for Mike when he's trying to get this preliminary stuff done. But, I mean, I'd be open to having that discussion when we set the primer or the, the final budget, you know what I mean? I think that, you know, maybe we should add them back in. But then there's the argument of, well, you know, can we save that 40,000 a year, every single year, year over year over year? Well...
You don't know unless you try.
Yeah, right, so I think that's, but my point is, is there's money to add them back in now because we get, we know what that health insurance increase is going to be, and only that 5%. We know that there is money available if we decide that we want to make that a priority, so...
That was a big thing for me, too, just the unknown and being risk averse. That's why I was really at the four and a half percent before. I think now, knowing that we're, we're saving 70,000 over what you budgeted, I think that's, makes the decision a little bit easier for us to go a little more aggressive. But I, like I said, I would like to take, maybe take a little less from Public Works and try and look at PD a little tighter because I, I mean, obviously, PD is important, but it just, when you're replacing a vehicle every single year, I mean, it's, just adds up, you know?
You got to think, though, that they haven't been on this rotation forever. We've, it took us a long time to get them on the rotation around now.
Yeah, so this was...
They were driving squad cars with over 100,000 miles on them, going 100 miles an hour to a call.
Did they ever miss any calls?
Well, no, that's not the point. The point is their safety, and everybody else on the road around them, safety, and whoever they're getting to, safety.
Right, but if they didn't have any issues, then why would we say that they're going to have issues now?
Uh, because they're in the shop all the time. Whether it be Ford or Dodge, trust me, I, we've, this week, we've had two Dodge Chargers in the shop. Now, there's, they're going to be, parts are going to be on delayed because of the strike. Their, the Fords are at the shop because their water pumps fail.
And Toyota, there's no other manufacturers like Toyota that actually make reliable cars that will, that are up to cop snuff? They're still not to that...
They have to be a pursuit rated.
Correct, okay.
If we can let the record show that Councilman Lundian's joined us at 5:49 here.
Yeah, a big, a big impetus for, when I rolled out this capital improvement plan in 2019 was, is that when I got here back in 2017, I was looking at the fuel and maintenance expenditures, and the year before I got here, we were spending 75 grand in that account. Couldn't possibly have been more than 30 of that was fuel and washes. And when you start, and at that point, we were basically spending enough in a single year on repairs to cover the cost of a squad.
Sure.
And at that point, I mean, I look at that, and I think, well, that, I mean, that's a fool's errand now. I mean, if you're going to spend that much on repairs each year, it starts to make more sense to just be replacing these and making sure that they have vehicles that are actually going to start, and they've got a proper rotation, but...
Okay, I, I didn't know that.
It was, it was kind of a, yeah, it was, yeah, back then, Chief Hill had to kind of beg for, for a squad car, and he'd ask for two or three, hoping to get one, and that regularly did not happen, so...
Councilman Collson made a statement about going 100 miles an hour to a call. I, I can't imagine one scenario that one of our city residents, that they could even do 100 miles an hour for a call. So, my question is, is how many, how many times are we responding out of agency where you would need to go 100 miles an hour?
I can kind of answer that a little bit. I mean, there's, there's a fairly regular basis where they're going medical calls, and they're going all sorts of different calls. I mean, even down to like Iscany Estates and stuff where we're, we're going and stretching the limit of, and even, you know, like an agency assist. I mean, you get calls where Cambridge will come down here, and I'm sure there's situations where we come up there, so, but go ahead, John, I'd start it.
I was just going to say, like the mayor said, I can't give you an exact number, but very often, either we're out helping the county or we're out helping Cambridge, or vice versa, we all kind of work as a team. So, we go, we drive at high speeds very regularly, not in the city, but doing agency assist. That's, that's what I thought. Okay. Just was very curious.
So, Steve, did you hear about the health insurance coming in? We just talked about that. I wasn't sure if Mike let you know, but can you give him the breakdown on that quick, just so he knows?
So, insurance renewal came in early, got it today. Today was a little busy, so I haven't had a ton of time to look at it, but 4.3%, not 25. Rough math, don't hold me to it, but rough math, about $70,000 benefit to the general fund. People can, people can still change elections, you know, go from family to single or single to family, or waive it, or whatever. And they have no obligation to let me know before the enrollment period ends, but that's where we sit.
And then, we also talked about moving the plow truck in to this year as well, and that wouldn't be anything that we would have to change levy to make that happen, so...
But I'd still, I'm still pretty solid that, you know, our seasonal workers save us a lot of money.
Well, we had a discussion about that, and that 70,000 that we saved from the health insurance, it's only about 40,000 to have our seasonal workers, so that would, that could cover that.
I personally wouldn't take that 70,000 in account as 100% savings. I wouldn't take that out of this gamut. I'd leave it where it's at. Final numbers, when they do come in, are going to be there, but that money will help, help offset for those seasonal workers. Three seasonal workers cost what one Public Works worker makes for the year. And they're only here for, you know, that seasonal time. If we end up cutting out seasonal workers, we better shut down the, you know, the compost site. Simple fact is, if we don't have that manned, we're going to end up with furniture, mattresses, and I've seen it. And I've seen them bring in stuff, and it costs this city thousands. That, what it cost us to have to haul all that stuff out of here that we did not want in there would pay for the seasonal workers in one year. So, that's a huge thing.
I do remember that as well.
Yeah, and I think you're, I, I agree with you on that. So, I mean, I, I think that we certainly could have a conversation about that. Now, we know, though, that we've got money, even if we go with scenario one, we're able to move the plow truck in. We already know what our health insurance cost is going to be thereabouts, and we know that we've got an extra 70,000 that we, we, you know, don't have budgeted already, or we don't have a specific spot for it that we're going to save that money from. And we could potentially use it to put seasonal workers back on. So, I mean, I think we've got, we've got the ability to guarantee that folks aren't going to pay any more than they did last year as long as they have the same house, and even though their value went up, you know, we've 8.8% according to the county. We're making sure that they're not, you know, we're going to stick to the, to that plan, and where they're not going to pay more, and we're still able to cover everything that you guys have brought up as far as being a concern. We've, we've pretty much covered it, and we're, we've been, we're able to work with it and work around it. And to me, scenario one makes an awful lot of sense.
I make a motion for scenario one.
Excuse me, Councilmember Heman, can you clarify which resolution? Are we going to do the resolutions individually or to group together? Resolution A is for approving the 2024 preliminary budget, and resolution B is proposed 2023 tax levy collectible in 2024.
If, if we do them individually, you should start with the budget, then the levy. Otherwise, it is perfectly fine to say both, and that we'd understand that off of this chart, which is at like the sixth, fourth page in, this chart is, are the numbers that would be filled in to the otherwise blank resolutions, just to make sure everybody is clear as...
I mean, Luke, are you concerned at all about anything else?
So, you know, coming into this, I had said that I wanted to be at the 4.4% strictly because I'm very risk averse, and I didn't want us to be hit by insurance, and I think the fact it came in so low is, is good, and it gives us a little more, a little less risk, so making this sort of cut, I think, is very reasonable. The only question I have is on, say, if we set the budget, how you'd laid out in scenario one, and it says no seasonal or interns, can we still decide to do seasonals and interns, or is that totally set, or is it still malleable?
Yes.
Okay.
Budget, the budget itself can be changed. The only thing that can't be changed is the amount of money we collect.
Okay.
Yeah, technically, technically...
How we spend the money can be changed all the way up till December 5.
Technically, today, the only thing that is required is the preliminary levy. Now, every city I'm ever been aware of always approves a budget because that is otherwise how you prove to the residents that you set a levy responsibly. So, pretty much everybody goes ahead and adopts the preliminary budget by resolution as well. My auditors would ask why on earth we didn't if we didn't, but by statute, it's, it's the levy that is the thing that is compulsory.
Do you know what the, what the hypothetical amount would be, say, if we, instead of moving the Public Works facility out 20 years, if we did 10 years, do you know what the difference might be in the percentage that we could, we could cut this year? I mean, that's kind of a very specific question.
Yeah, I, I couldn't do that math off the top of my head. I'd have to, I'd have to look a lot more closely at it.
Okay, because I do think 20 years is a bit of a stretch for that building, just with the, with the growth, yeah, with the growth of the city, but I, I do appreciate that, the, the idea of keeping taxes level. You're paying the same out of your pocket, but I don't know where else we can cut, or if there's any sort of reasonable expectation or ability to get it 10 years instead of 20.
Well, so, do, do remember, is when you approve a, a capital improvement budget, you're only ever actually approving the one year. All the other years are simply to prove that this year was correct, right? That we, we had good justification that that was a proper levy number. But all the future years can be changed as we go, and almost certainly will have numerous changes every year, right? Whether it's updating amounts, or, you know, Matt's got a trailer that's scheduled, and he says, I don't need to replace it, push it back a year. So, that document, those future years will change, you're ever really only approving expenditures in the one year. So, this year, it's just 2024, the rest of the years are to prove we're correct, is kind of how I think about it.
And we can still look at that. I mean, all we're saying, I mean, we, we don't have to decide exactly how we spend the money, but we've shown that we can do it, and we can, like I said, we can guarantee that if you, everything stays the same. I mean, we're, our goal, based off of these average numbers, is to make sure nobody pays anything more than they did last year.
Yep, and that was originally my idea, that I was like, well, I want people to not, you know, every year politicians are always like, well, you paid less in taxes. No, we paid more in taxes because inflation of the housing market, you know, so we still paid more out of our pocket. So, that was my idea, and I like it, but at the same time, we don't want to make our workers feel like they're not, I don't know, not getting what they need, but it's, it's kind of a, it's a, I don't know, it's a hard, hard decision to make. But I don't know if, with scenario one, what is the actual, is that exactly 8.8% reduction in...
Well, it's 8.97.
8.9.
8.97, so we're subsequently nine, I mean, three, three hundredths of a percent, I mean, you're talking pennies, so...
Option two is still better than option three.
Right.
And you're not cutting yourself short when we still have a couple of months left to set the final...
Scenario one's not cutting ourselves short either. We've got, with that 70,000, we've got 190,000 that is going to go to fund balance, or we can decide to do something else with it, too. You know, I mean, it's...
I think it's a reasonable goal for us to try and keep people's taxes the same. I mean, especially with the city growing, we, we went up in residence, so we should still be getting more tax revenue, correct? I mean, it...
With that comes more public services.
Yeah, no, right, and that's why I said it'd be nice if we could maybe get that Public Works to, you know, 10 years or... So, if we were to go, I mean, 8.8% versus 8.975, how much money is that? You said pennies, I mean, is it like 10,000?
Sorry, I was referencing the difference between nine even versus 8.97.
Oh, oh, gotcha, gotcha, okay.
And the pennies would be, is what, any... And the pennies would be, is what any one homeowner would recognize as a difference.
Gotcha, yeah, okay, gotcha.
It'd be a very, very small amount.
Okay, so if we were to say, I mean, I know, maybe it's a little late now, but could we tweak scenario one to be, you know, at 8.8%, which is what our goal was, and then whatever the Public Works facility comes out to in the capital improvement plan, maybe moves from 20 years to 18, could we do it that way? Because then we're still at our 8.8% goal, but then still slowly moving the Public Works facility sooner, if that makes sense? Or is it too late in the game to?
Yeah, I don't know how I can do that math at this moment with confidence.
You have that ceiling.
Yeah.
To work, he's got time to work those numbers. This really technically does not need to be set in stone.
I understand.
Until December. So if you cut yourself short now, you can't raise it.
I understand.
What we're doing today is making a commitment.
Yeah.
To say, hey, we know that residents want lower taxes, and we're gonna make sure that we take care of that. We're committing to that. We've got that 190,000 to play with still if we need to, you know what I mean? We, we've got the, the fund balance at 43%. It's not like our fund balance is drained if we decide we don't want to put anything into fund balance, and we want to use all that 190,000 to go toward, you know, to go toward a, a Public Works facility if we, if we see that it needs to be that way.
And I'm, I'm.
We can always decide that.
I'm looking at this as like a household. Say if you know you're gonna make $100,000, even though you usually make 150, you're gonna figure out a way to make it work without losing services or without, you know, you're gonna try and find a way, but if you don't know coming into it that you're, you have that goal, it's harder to set and make, meet those goals if you're not planning for it. So I think it's good to set a, a goal like that, and I think knowing that, you know, the $70,000 that we're saving on the health insurance, I mean, I was coming in here thinking there's no way I'm gonna go with scenario one, but with that, I mean, I think it gives us a lot of room, and I think it's totally reasonable to go with scenario one, but I would like to get it to, I mean, maybe it's picking feathers, but I'd rather have it at 8.8 instead of 8.975, just because that was our goal, and then there's, it's just a little bit of cushion that we can put back into the general fund or whatever.
The only, the only way I would be okay with scenario one is the seasonal help would have to stay in there.
Okay, I, yeah, I, I don't have any problem with that either.
I don't like the idea, it, you know, pushing the Public Works facility out 20 years, saying that now is pretty premature. You don't even need to say that in there. Because we're doing this every year. Like she said, the capital improvements, the plan is done every year by each department head, and it's usually 10 to 20 years out. Every year, something gets adjusted, something could shift ahead or shift back, but.
So Mike, if we left seasonal workers in there saying roughly, was it 40,000 is what we're paying for seasonal workers, what would that put scenario one's percentage of decrease at?
Right.
Well, you'd still have another 30,000 that could go to, it, we wouldn't really need to change.
I'd just assume, if we're gonna set the ceiling head, I'd rather have that seasonal worker in there. Those seasonal workers can't come out. They just can't. I, I don't think you realize.
So I mean, if, you're saying if you guys, if we wanted to go with scenario one, let's add the seasonal workers back in.
Yep, and then what percentage does that put the tax deduction at, is what I'm getting at?
Good question.
Still be the same or lower.
Yeah.
It doesn't have, the levy amount wouldn't have to change in order to do that.
Yeah, I'm very hesitant to try to be doing math off the cuff.
Yeah.
Um, I really don't want to get into a situation where I'm confident in my number, find out I'm not right, or find out that a council member has misunderstood my communication on that.
Mm-hmm.
I'm a lot more comfortable sticking to.
So what I'm getting, what I'm getting at, instead of it being at 8.9%, if we, we've left seasonal workers in there, set that ceiling head at an 8% deduction, would that still cover seasonal workers? That's what I'm asking. Is that close enough? I would be fine with scenario one if we drop it at 8%. We can always work those numbers to get that other three quarters or full percent.
Steve, we, because of what, the room that we're gonna have, we know already that we have room there. We could add seasonal workers back in and still keep it at the 8.97, and still have, and still have additional.
Plus the plow truck?
Plus the plow truck, yeah.
Yeah, the, yeah, I, I understand your question, Steve, and then, the problem is doing the math in my head, and, and knowing that I'm being accurate, and then actually communicating that correctly is, is my hesitancy on that. I, the, the last thing I want to do is, is we get down to the last minute like this, and I come back two days here or something and find out that one or more council members thought this.
Mm-hmm.
And somebody else thought this. I, that's, that's gonna be a bad.
That's why I was throwing that in there.
Situation.
But, but I mean, I could, I could be talked into saying scenario one with seasonal workers added back in. That's easy, and I mean, you can take it from there, right? I mean, that's.
Yeah.
Yeah, because then the only modification is to fund balance substantively.
Yeah, I think if we can set it at, keep the seasonals, or put seasonals back in and then set it at 8.8, and wherever that comes.
Why not just leave it the, let's just leave it the 8.97?
So, so the simplest way to do this is, is that if, if council simply agrees by consensus that we want the seasonals back in, we could simply approve scenario one in this example. We have the numbers that we know are going to go into these resolutions, because these are, these are resolutions that gotta get to the county and then eventually to the state. And then we simply have no direction going forward, because we're also gonna add in the, um, academy and the.
Civilian academy and the police explorers.
Yes, so we're gonna add that. So we already know there's some tweaks and changes.
Yeah, absolutely. There's gonna be tweaks and changes all the way up till December 5th.
Yeah, and on here, you know, health, we know about health insurance, but it's not represented on here, because I didn't get it till today. Um, so we still just approve it as it is, but we all understand there's now a checklist of things that will change, and we all understand the implications of it. Health insurance changes, seasonals changes, the, the two, uh, police programs change, and God knows, there'll probably be something else.
Oh, I'm sure.
I mean, that's just how it works.
Well, you ain't got the bill for the squad cars yet, so.
Well, hopefully that's a 20.
That's why you said it here.
Hopefully that is 2023 expense.
Oh, oh shucks, moment.
You still have.
Next month.
You still have 30, 30 grand left, Dan, even after adding the seasonals back in. I don't know why, why you're so averse to, to saving people a little money.
I am saving people money by getting a plow truck now instead of waiting three years when you're gonna spend 100 grand more.
We are gonna get the plow truck now.
Well, it wasn't like that at the last meeting, was it?
But it is today, isn't it? So what are we talking about here? I'm, I'm, I'm okay if you guys, if you guys want to say scenario one, and we want to give direction that we will, uh, we're gonna make the adjustment on the budget, so let me kind of frame it here. So the budget resolution, we're saying we're, we're gonna approve that with direction that we will add seasonals back in for Public Works, that we will, um, make the adjustment for health insurance, and that we will tentatively plan on the police explorer program and the, uh, citizens academy.
You did state the plow truck, right?
And, and, and add the plow truck back in, the grader was already in. Yeah, but, and, yes, and you're right, I forgot that, and add the plow truck back in.
Yes, so in that scenario, basically is what's happening, is it, council in that scenario, vote, or have motions again, have a vote, adopt scenario one, and then the other components are simply giving staff direction for future presentation.
So, so that would be, I'll just make the motion. So it's, I'll make a motion for scenario one with the direction that staff will, will take those items that I mentioned into consideration.
Which items are those?
Ones I just said.
So I, I have, I have written down that we're gonna add the plow truck, we're gonna understand the rough 80,000 savings, or 80, $70,000 savings in health insurance in the general fund. Uh, we'd add back 40,000 for seasonals and, uh, 10,000 for roughly, whatever the actual number was, 10,000 and change for, uh, for the two PD programs.
And then now, do we want to make these separate motions, or do you want me to add to that motion that we would also like to adopt the levy from scenario one?
I would recommend you do both at the same time.
Okay.
It's definitely the clearest, most well-understood, yes.
Yes, then I'd also like to adopt the levy from scenario one.
Yep, you heard it.
At the 8.97.
Scenario one preliminary budget and scenario one preliminary levy.
Okay, so that would be, that would be my motion.
I'll second.
So I have a motion from myself and a second from, uh, Councilman Merrill is the first that I heard. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries 5-0.
Good work, guys.
Yes, I think that was a, a great discussion. I think we got everything that, uh, everything that I think everybody was hoping for and everything that we needed, and, um, but there's a lot of value. I know we have some, some disagreements up here, but I think there's a lot of value in those disagreements, and I think we're, we're coming to, because, because of that robust discussion. I mean, if we were never upset with each other, we're probably not doing things the right way, you know? I mean, there's councils that everybody agrees, and they just go along to get along, and that's what it is, but I really appreciate you guys, all of you guys having an opinion and, and being passionate about what we're talking about. That's awesome. It's awesome to see this group work, and, and I'm proud to be a part of it, so. Uh, any other comments? Otherwise, I would look for a, a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
I have a motion to adjourn from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Collison. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries 5-0. We are adjourned.
You're good.